Everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the Woodbury Village Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence just for the people we lost in Afghanistan in remembrance of 9/11. I'd like to welcome you to the Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting will be in October, October 13th. Whether it's virtual or in person, it's undecided at this time, so you'll just have to keep abreast. I'd like to introduce our board to you. On your far right, we have Mr. Evan Yan. Then we have Mr. Andrew Zumis, Mr. Kevin Abrams, Mr. Craig Brady, myself, Karen Unger, our attorney, Kelly Naughton, our recording secretary is in the rear, Jessica McLennan. And we'll go to the agenda right now. Okay, first on the agenda is an executive session. We have none. Number two is the minutes, previous minutes. Has everyone on the board read the minutes from August 11th? Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as submitted? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have no new business, and we do have action on decisions. First decision is Hannespeck, review draft decision for an area variance to permit the keeping of livestock, chickens, and roosters on a parcel having less than two acres with less than 200 feet from a property line. Property is located in the R-1A zoning district at 100 Summit Avenue, Central Valley, Section 228, Block 9, Lot 1.21. And we have a decision here. After several pages of facts and findings, the conclusion is, as a consequence of the board's discussion, the zoning board of appeals hereby denies the requested area variances described and discussed above. Do I have a motion to vote on this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Who was that, Andrew?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Kevin?
Me?
Yes.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the variances that were requested have been denied. Second action on decision is Vanderhorst, review draft decision requesting a variance for the construction of a six-foot fence on the side yard where as pursuant to Section 146-5B, no fence shall be more than four feet in height in any side yard. Said property is located in the R-1A zoning district at 49 Ridge Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 241, Block 1, Lot 2. And after a couple of pages of facts and findings, the conclusions, conclusion for this decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variance described and discussed above to the extent noted above, and hereby finds that the variance as granted is the minimum variance necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section A316-9 of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicants within 180 days from the date of this decision. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to vote on this?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Kevin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So the Vanderhorts will get their six-foot fence. Thank you. Third action on decision is for Coughlin, review draft decision for the construction of a solid six-foot fence in the front yard. Said property is located in the R-1A zoning district at 1 Cindy Lane, Highland Mills, Section 221, Block 3, Lot 8. And after a couple of pages of facts and findings, the conclusion for this variant, this request is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested area variances described and discussed above to the extent noted above, and hereby finds that the variances as granted are the minimum variances necessary to protect, I'm sorry, to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. As per Section A316-9 of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to vote on this?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kevin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So Mr. Coughlin will get his fence. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing. First one is Fisher. This is a continuation of a public hearing for area variances to permit the subdivision of 2.07 acres into two lots for the construction of a new single-family residence, where as pursuant to Section 310-7, properties in the R-1A district are required to have a minimum lot area of 1.0 acres and a minimum side yard setback of 30 feet. The application proposes a minimum lot area of 0.91 acres and has side yard setback of 12.2 feet. Said property is located in the R-1A zoning district at 7 Scunnamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 204, Block 1, Lot 36.2. Is the applicant present? Could you please state your name for the record, sir?
Jess, can you hear into the microphone? You can hear? Okay.
Yes, I'm going to ask everybody to speak into the microphone because I know when we watch the recordings, it's very difficult to hear. So I appreciate that. So we had our meeting in August, and we determined that you have 2.07 acres that you would like to divide into two lots, correct? To build a home on one lot, and theoretically, you should be able to create two one-acre lots from 0.07, but given the easements and the slopes on the property, that became near impossible since you went before the planning board, what, five times? Four times, five times? A lot. And after several attempts of redrawing lines or whatever, and the planning board wishing more straightforward, you know, right, geometric lines, you came up with the plan that's before us, which is two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 1 is where the proposed dwelling would be, and that's the one that needs the variance for size because it's less than one acre. Now, I'd like to ask a question of you. In the public hearing, it says that the lot area is 0.91 acres, but on your map, it has 0.94 acres, which is the correct number?
Well, 0.94 acres would be correct. That's the gross area. The net area that we're looking for is 0.91. That eliminates the steep slopes of 0.94, which gives us the useful area needed to build.
So you were deducting the slopes from the 0.94, and you're coming up with the 0.91? Is that what you're saying?
I am.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it would be written, but that's the intent.
Okay.
We want Lot 1 to be 0.94, the gross.
Gotcha. Okay. And Lot 2 is where the existing farmhouse where somebody lives is, and you plan to take down the barn and part of the masonry building, and part of that masonry building that remains will become a garage. Maybe I should wait for the microphones. Thank you, Craig.
No worries. Thank you. Yes, that is true.
Okay. So we're on the same page so far. So at the last meeting, we discussed the reasons for the current lines that have been drawn for property lines, and why we could do this and couldn't do that, and whatever. And then the board requested a site visit to look at the property, which was done on August 26th. Is there anything else that you wish to add before we?
No, you know, I appreciate the board's efforts and endeavor to come out to the site to look at the property and to understand the project even further, see it in three dimensions. So we realize the effort associated with that, and we appreciate it very much. I'm hoping the board appreciates the historicity of the existing structure that will become an accessory structure. Once we are removing a good portion of it, it would be advantageous to keep the remaining portion. It is, it does have some throwback, some historicity associated with the village, with that area of the neighborhood, and we would be most appreciative if the board would allow that to continue. It is a side yard setback. We would have 12.2 as a side yard, which would require a 17.8-foot variance.
Anyone from the board wish to ask Mr. McCoys any questions?
I'm good.
Andrew and Evan, you good so far?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll open it up to the public and take it from there. All right? Thank you. Is there anyone in the front row who wishes to speak to this application? And please state your name for the record so that the secretary can record that.
Sure. I'm Tom Skoronsky. I live across the street on 5 Lent Drive from the property, so I was here in the last meeting. And in the creamery, you know, the building that they want to keep for, you know, because it's a beautification, I guess it's, you know, it's a throwback, but I, you know, you know, that sounds great, but I didn't hear anybody address the sizable well and what effects on the aquifers. It'll have, have a profound effect. It's a huge, it's a big well. I don't know if anybody realizes or if anybody from the town took a look at it. It's directly underneath that structure that they want to keep. It's inside and it's covered, but it's a huge, I mean, you know, you could jump into it, a human being, and you could look down as far as you can see, even with like a, you know, a million candle-powered light, nothing but pristine, clear water, you know, so.
You could see that from the inside? Is that what you're saying?
I've seen it, yeah. So I just don't know if anybody's seen it because, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not here to be, you know, to be complaining, but I just want to make sure that it's vetted properly before they allow something like that to happen, because I don't want, you know, a well to be covered up underneath that building. And it sounds like that building is being kept, everything else is being torn down. That building is being kept for a throwback purpose because it looks nice, but, you know, I just hope that somebody from the town, not somebody independent, but somebody from the state or town, does an independent, look and see what aquifers are affected, because the, you know, our Earl Reservoir is right there, and it's like within a football field of it. And whether it's winter, summer, spring, or fall, whether we have a drought, whether we have a monsoon, it's dead level all the time with that concrete. So it's, you know, it's going down deep, and it's hitting something pretty big. So I just want to make sure that that's vetted before this goes through, because, you know, that could have a profound effect on water tables, aquifers, Earl Reservoir, you know, trees, anything, you know, anything in the area, you know. That's my hope as a resident who lives right there. You know, I want to keep up, you know, the way the area is. I have no qualms against subdivision, but, you know, that right there looks like something that needs to be addressed a little bit more seriously than I've been hearing, hopefully, you know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the second row who wishes to?
Madam Chair, maybe the project manager could fill in some of the, we didn't have the ability to go inside to evaluate the inside of any structure. Maybe the project manager could tell us a little more about what he knows about a well on the property or in that building?
David, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, we're ready to take care of the technical issues associated with it. That will be definitely resolved and addressed during the planning board process and the building department process associated with whatever permits. Right now, this is the first stage, getting the variance for us to proceed. Then after that, we can definitely deal with whatever technical issues need to be addressed, and I'm quite confident that that will come up during the planning board process.
To your knowledge, is there a well in that building that's there?
I have not seen one.
Well, it could be. Alan Jones had a water company up there when they first started developing.
Had the dairy, yeah. That was the bottling plant.
When was the last time, you know?
But that was ages ago. That was fifty years ago.
Oh, it was a long time ago, yeah. You know?
Yeah, but that's up to the planning board to deal with.
Yeah. I mean, it's private property. Everybody else, you know, has the freedom and the right to have a well in septic or municipal water and sewer, you know, that's no question. I'm not sure how this well would affect any other aquifers or any other lakes, but that's something we'll have to investigate during the technical process.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's also something for us to evaluate on the environmental impact of granting this variance as well. So while it's definitely something that's going to have to come before the planning board, I think that if there is an environmental impact.
The well has no bearing on our decision.
If that well is staying in the building that's remaining, we're not touching that with the variance.
It's going to do with us.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Andrew?
One of our five, one of our five questions.
About the land difference, not the well.
The land difference?
Yeah, we're asked to make a variance because the land is not, is not one acre. That's all we're asked.
No, what I'm saying is when we're going through the questions.
The well's got no bearing on it, to be honest with you.
Environmental impact is one of the questions.
The well's got no bearing on it. We're not determining.
But the environmental impact would have to do with the two questions that we're looking at, the size of Lot 1 or 2, whatever it was. Lot 1, which is under one acre, and the 12.2 setback from that building that's already there, just we would be drawing a line 12.2 feet away. What they do with the building, in other words, the plan is to make a garage, whether that actually comes to fruition, I don't know. They would have to go to the planning board and take care of that themselves.
So when the zoning board is evaluating this project that's going to have a garage with a well in it?
Well, we're not evaluating whether there's going to be a garage with a well. We're only evaluating whether the building that's 12.2 feet away from a proposed property line is something we would approve or disapprove.
Correct.
Am I correct on that?
Yes, so I think what Andrew's speaking to is the fourth element, which does require the board to consider whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or district. And the board would be looking at that element, whoops, sorry, would be looking at that element as it relates to the requested setback for the existing building of the masonry building to, of the masonry building that is remaining. So the board would look at it in that instance and see if the granting of that setback would have, for that building where this is apparently located, would have an adverse effect or impact on the environment. Did that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
And also, please remember, the building department did opine on the building already. You know, they, he gave his recommendations or his thoughts regarding the building and what we want to do with it and its relationship to the site. So he is, or the department as a whole is aware of the building. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll have to go through that technical process after receiving these variances.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the second row who wishes to speak to this application? Third?
Would you be okay if I spoke to you?
Yeah, let me just go through everybody else first, okay, sir? Thank you. Third row? Fourth row? Back of the, there's no row.
Back of the room.
Back of the room. There you go.
Maria Hunter. Kevin, you did mention this was a Jones Farm property? Okay. I was a little confused. I, is the farmhouse being pulled down or is it the house? Is the house that's going to be pulled down?
No.
No.
Which one is?
Part of the barn.
It's, no, the red barn is being pulled down, and the part of the masonry building that's next to it, approximately, what, one-thirdish?
Okay.
Of it will be.
All right. The history for this property up there, Kevin, and I know its history is more older than you, but in the code, our zoning code, and if someone purchased a property, any property, it's buyer beware. If you purchase a property, do your due diligence and know what the site is and what you to build on. We have to stop giving variances for subdividing a lot into less than one-acre lot when it's supposed to be, the zone is code for. The village just this year, we had an issue with water shortage. They're looking for more water. Now you're taking one house, you're making it into a house and a garage. I have no idea what the garage is going to be used for. That's for the building, that's for the planning board to figure out. So we've had a water shortage, we have a building moratorium going on. The village is looking, the village board is looking for ways to make sure that all of us who are living here currently can stay here comfortably, whether it be water or whatever it is. So I'm sorry, I'm always pro-business, I'm pro for people living here, but time has come, has to come, stop giving out these variances. It's the person who buys their property should do their due diligence, see what the zone is, make their decision, and let's keep it that way. I, for one, have lived here for 42 years. My husband's family's here from the 1800s. We've followed the code for all these years. We got denied. Okay, we got denied, no problem, but let's keep everyone following the code, the zoning code. I'm just tired of hearing change for this, change for that, and everything is being given, not always from this board, don't get me wrong, but also the history. If we lose that part of that history, Jones Farm, was there, you know, people don't know the history of that property.
Unless it's registered, it has no.
And I don't know how long, you know, we should have probably looked into it with the historical society, if there's any historic value. So, and that's my concern, you know, and it's less than an acre. Point nine-four or nine-point-one, nine-point-one, enough already. We can't keep going at this rate with our valuable resources being at risk.
But he could have one acre and one acre, but we're doing what the planning board has asked us.
Well, I'm just offering my opinion as a resident in this town.
That's okay.
You know, enough is enough already with subdividing. You don't even know, and I'll follow up with the planning board, so I was reading the minutes on it. He keeps saying the applicant's representative, a garage. What is that garage for? Keep that in mind. What is it for? It's not your problem, it's the planning board's problem, and I will follow up with them. But we keep doing these variances approvals, some of them go through, some don't. When is enough enough? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Anyone else in the rear of the room wish to speak to this application? David, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, yes, go ahead. Yes, please.
Sorry. Tom Skoronsky, I live across the street, again, 5 Lent Drive. I'll just cut to the chase because I, not to be cynical, but I don't want that garage or that creamery, because the creamery is built right on top of that slab, which is going to become a garage. I don't want that to become a Trojan horse for, you know, them flowing billions of gallons of water right down to Cairo Stroll, and, you know, what aquifer is it going to tap and, you know, what effect could it have on the whole area? I mean, there's a lot of people that have that well, you know, we don't know the scope of it, but we know it's huge. I've seen it, and, you know, and for them not to know that the well is not there, you know, I, you know, that's, you know, we're talking, you know, some people are hearing, we're not even close to the issue here. And, you know, that's all my concern is, that that could be just a Trojan horse, you know, because if you want to keep something nice, the barn is beautiful, right? It's red, it's gorgeous, and they kept the barn there. The barn had a fire on it, so that, your chimney, if you noticed, if you ever went to the property, the chimney is way higher than the rooftop because they had a fire, right? So, but they wanted to preserve that barn, so they kept, they rebuilt the barn. But there's really no reason for the creamery other than, I mean, to make it, to say, well, it's going to be parking, for parking, and there's a major well sitting there and say, oh, I don't know, there's a well there. What if they tap it? I mean, you know, I live across the street, I want to make sure that that's vetted. I'm not, I'm not against them building, subdividing at all. I mean, you know, live and let live. I just want the community to be not affected that badly by it, and, and I just hope that, you know, if the board doesn't address it because it's out of their scope, who will before this gets, right? Because if the well is on the said property, that property might not be available to be subdivided with a well on it. I mean, that's another consideration.
But I don't think that's a town well.
Oh, no, that well was built 100 years ago. It could be, it could be technically owned by the state. Who knows? The state may have to come in here and look at it. That's a whole nother consideration, because they preempted this, you know, and if it's not in anybody's maps, you know, it's a private well, it's a huge well, and it needs to be explored at the very least. But, you know, I haven't heard much of it here, so I just want to make sure that, hey, look, what's hiding this, and, you know, put it to the front burner a little bit more than it has been. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? David, you need to say anything before we decide what we're going to do here? No? What's the board's pleasure here? Do you need to ask any more questions, or you want to close the public hearing, or what are we going to do? You have enough information, you think?
I don't think there's any more information we can get.
What about you, Craig? You okay so far? Andrew?
Yes. I'm okay.
You're okay with that? Evan?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and we will discuss it at the end of this meeting. All right? Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing for Beer World. It's a public hearing requesting variances from, number one, Section 310-32B to exceed the square footage for retail establishment. Number two, Section 310-30, letter D, number two, letter D again, to allow an additional wall sign in excess of what is permitted. And three, Attachment 11 of Chapter 310 to allow additional wall sign area in excess of what is permitted. Said property is located in the LC zoning district at 159 State Route 32 in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 226, Block 1, Lot 9.2. Is the applicant present? Oh, we have a easel, if that would be easier.
If you would like, sir.
Yeah, I think, raise it up a little. So let me give it a little background and make sure that we're all on the same page here. So the first thing, would you just give your name, sir, for the, for the record?
Sure. I'm Dominic Crdisco from the law firm of Drake Loeb.
Okay. So the applicant is John Safe, correct?
Correct.
The owner of the property is the Cluddy family, LLC.
That's correct.
And Denise Forcello is the spokesperson for that family, according to all the paperwork that you gave?
Yes.
That is correct? Okay. So what you wish to do is to build a new building, you're going to demolish the existing building. buildings, which is the current dugout building in that area, and you're looking for three variances. You're looking for relief from the 8,000 square feet of the maximum allowed by the code?
Per store, that's correct.
For the retail area, correct? You're looking for relief from the two-wall sign limit, you would like three?
That's correct.
And you're looking for relief from the 30-square-foot sign, uh, limit, maximum. You want 32 square feet, is that per sign?
No, that's overall.
That's what?
I believe it's overall, is the amount of square footage overall.
Oh, so for the three signs, in other words... All three signs? You want all three signs to be 32 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought you were saying you wanted three...
No, no.
That didn't make sense, okay. All right. I'd like to start with the signage first, because I think it'll be quicker than the size of the building to discuss, or the board have any issue with that?
Just say that if the board doesn't believe that the 8,000...
Right, the signage wouldn't matter, that's true.
Signage would not matter.
All right, let's do that first then.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. I was just trying to scoot two things out of the way. All right, all right, so, what you are planning, okay, is a 15,110 footprint, okay?
That is correct.
And this would be for beverage sales?
Yes, ma'am.
Recycling redemption center?
That is correct.
And you say a warehouse, now what do you mean by a warehouse?
It's onsite storage for product that would be sold in the facility.
Sell at that particular store?
Correct.
Or sell to, like, ship it to another Beer World?
No, it would be onsite's product for storage for sale at this particular...
Just at that facility, okay. I noticed when you gave the renderings, well, you gave the plans, and I didn't see any setbacks for a side, front, rear, whatever, which was a little concerning to me, mostly in the rear, personally in the rear, because of all the trees that are there. I would like to see something that shows what's going to be cleared and how much of it's going to remain if this was to go through. If you look at the rear, if you look at a map, or you even traverse the property, you'll see that at the rear of that property, and when I say the rear, I mean the portion that's parallel to Route 32.
Yes.
Where the trees are. There are homes there.
Yes, there are.
And, you know, one of them has a pool that's right near the tree line. Are they gonna be sitting there looking at Beer World while they're floating in their pool in the summer, you know, I'm concerned about that. So I would like to see something with the measure, you know, the side, yard, front, rear, whatever.
We can certainly provide that for...
Also, you have a rendering of visual view, and one of them is, shows it from Smith Street, but where is Smith Street?
I'm not sure.
I don't know where Smith Street is in town, does anybody else? I couldn't find it.
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about.
It does say Smith Street, but...
I don't know where Smith Street is.
That's probably a typo.
Probably a typo.
It could very well be.
Okay.
Because that's essentially looking at the proposed frontage from the hotel towards the George...
Fort Knox, yeah.
So, that's just...
I just thought perhaps they put a little road in between the hotel and, um...
No.
But I didn't see...
And it wouldn't be named, because it wouldn't be...
I know that, that's why I was asking.
I've made a note, and will provide clarification for that, as part of the next submission.
Looking at the renderings that have been provided, and I'm sure the planning board has to really deal with your question...
You should talk into the microphone, so that poor Jessica can hear you.
Jessica can hear me, can you hear me now? It's not a Verizon commercial. From this rendering that was provided, and from, I believe the planning board needs to address what, your question, really, and, but it does look like there was accommodation made for fencing regarding the pool. That's my understanding. I checked most of the, um, the planning board videos regarding that, so from a clearing perspective, because of where this is, essentially the entire property is cleared.
Yeah, that's...
But I, and again, I think your question about the setbacks is appropriate, I don't see them easily labeled here.
It wasn't shown on this plan, it was shown on plans to the planning board.
Right.
And in terms to provide us with the ability for the planning board to refer us to the zoning board, and we meet the setbacks, but I understand the question, and I understand the concern, so we will be sure to submit a plan that shows the setbacks, including not only setbacks to property line, but setbacks, if we can, to the closest structures that are on adjoining properties, so you could have a sense of that. I think it would be helpful for the board in making that determination.
Thank you.
Of course.
From what I read in the documents that we received, this Beer World is planned to be larger than several of the Beer Worlds in the area. Is there a reason for that?
This is considered to be a premier facility for Beer World, is what the plan is, given the proximity of Woodbury, it's the center of retail development in the county, and so the desire was to make this a flagship location for Beer World. Mr. Safe is here tonight as well, John Safe, who is the applicant, and he is also the director of business development for Beer World. And unfortunately, I have to tell you, at the outside, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to say, so I'm the attorney, and, you know, so Larry Marshall is the design professional for the engineer, he's Mercurio Norton Taroli and Marshall, out of Pine Bush, and he is being delayed tonight, he's in, he's in Waywayanda, and he was hoping to be here, but he's not able to be here now. When we got called, we thought that perhaps if the meeting had run longer, he would be able to swing both, but to be that as it may, like, I'm making a list of your concerns, and we're certainly not asking you for a decision tonight, we want to understand whatever concerns that the board may have, we want to make sure that we're presenting our best project, because this is supposed to be a premier Beer World at this location. And we understand also that there is a strong attachment to the existing dugout, you know, it's something that we acknowledged early on. The dugout, of course, is not owned by the Coletti family, the Coletti family owns the property, and the dugout is a tenant, and the Coletti family has listed this property for sale for a number of years, and now it's under contract to be purchased, and, you know, so it's just because Beer World is coming here, I don't want to give the impression that that means that the dugout, you know, would have to leave, it's, they're not related, and we don't have any control over the dugout site and their existence, so I wanted to point that out, but I understand it's a sensitive issue. You know, we are working on detailed plans, we've been before the planning board as well, we know that this site is going to require a highway work permit from the New York State Department of Transportation, we know that there's going to be highway improvements at Route 32 at this intersection, currently, right now, there are none, you know, in the sense that it's a gravel area where you drive in and out, and it's not controlled, there are some benefits to that. I do want to touch briefly, and I also, obviously, I'm more interested in hearing your comments and any comments that the public may have, but I do want to talk a little bit about the size of the building and a particular quirk, if I may, of the zoning. This is in the LC zone, where commercial buildings are allowed, and multiple uses can exist within commercial buildings, so you could have, this could be actually a 16,000-square-foot building, provided that it met all of the setbacks, as long as it was two separate stores, and neither store exceeded 8,000 square feet. So, it could be an 8,000-square-feet Beer World next to an 8,000-square-foot bank, or choose your retail use, whatever it would be, and there wouldn't need to be any variances necessary associated with that. And I also understand the zoning, I think the intent there was to have smaller stores in this particular location within the village. We are asking for a variance, the Beer World itself is 11,840 square feet, so the retail center itself, if you're measuring it compared to the 8,000, is only, I went to law school because I'm bad with math, is 3,180-some feet, so that's the, if you're just focused on the retail portion of it. We are obliged by law to have a redemption center, our preference would be to have a separate entrance to the redemption center, so we've identified that, that also leads into the signage issue, because we would like a sign in front of, over top of Beer World, we would like a sign over the redemption center, so that people who are returning are not in the retail space. And we also like what a sign along the north side of the building, so people that are traveling south along 32 would be able to see it. That actually was a suggestion by one of the planning board's consultants to consider that, and we added that because we thought it was actually a very thoughtful and good suggestion.
Don't you also have a freestanding sign?
We do have a freestanding sign, that's correct.
So you don't believe that the southbound people would see that sign?
No, I think that they would, it's just that without a sign on the northerly wall, it's going to be a very large wall without any identification of what the building would be on that. I think it would be helpful overall in the process, but, like I said, I'm here to hear your concerns, we are not asking you for a decision tonight, I'm here to hear any concerns that the members of the public may have, and we would like to take that feedback and see how best we can respond to the board to move forward.
Anybody so far have anything they want to say on the board? Questions?
Well, if they weren't building the, this fancy thing, would you be able to fit all that within the scope of the zoning?
The retail, if we didn't do the redemption center, the building would be 11,000...
No, no, not this size building, one of your standard ones.
Ah, one of the standard ones. It is possible to reduce the size of this building, I believe, the intent here was to make sure that we had as much product and presented in the best way as possible. I do have some renderings and additional photographs that are not part of our submission, but maybe it's part of our next submission, to give you a sense of the scope of the building. And I would certainly encourage you guys, oh, I'm sorry, I'm off mic. I would also encourage you to go to Middletown, and also Kingston is a beautiful facility as well, if you happen to be traveling up the thruway, to look at the Beer World facilities. These are newer facilities, there is a real pride in the product, and it's actually kind of a fun environment, if you're into beer, quite honestly, so, but many people are.
Kevin, did he answer your question as far as the standard size being 8,000?
No, I understand that, and so you have to bear in mind, like I said, I'm the attorney, so I think the, I flagged your question, and it's part of our, it's part of our next submission. You know, we can compare this and provide some basis for you to answer really your question, but I haven't forgotten it.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, so, I understand, in terms of square footage of retail, you know, obviously you want to maximize linear square feet, so you have more retail space, but what drives and dictates the square footage of the recycle portion?
Yeah. I will flag that as a question as well.
And if we're isolating the warehouse, what you're calling the warehouse section as well, why does that need to be the size that...
I think the 3,000 is for the redemption and warehouse combined, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Is that a typical size for the, for a redemption area, or do you just feel that because this could be a flagship building that you would need more space than what you normally have?
I'm writing down your question.
Can you or somebody describe to us how the redemption center is going to work? How, are you just gonna have machines, is that gonna be packaged? What is the, what are the details behind that portion of the accessory use?
We will have someone here at the next meeting that can describe that for you.
Is part of that warehouse, is part of that warehouse space gonna be used to store redeemed?
Yes.
So I think it's critical that we understand the process.
Yes.
So, you know, are the bottles gonna be cleaned, are the cans gonna be cleaned, what is, we need to know that process as well.
That would be done within the redemption center?
Yes.
And how often are those bottles or cans or whatever picked up?
I flagged as a question how the redemption center works, and we'll have a representative here that is fully familiar with it.
Is there anything? Did you have another question? Is there anything you could answer on the environmental form?
Sure.
Okay. All right, let's work on that. All right, you submitted a part two.
I did the part two. Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can go over the secret part. Yes. Sorry, the draft part two was something I provided to the board. As this board knows, you mostly deal with type-two applications, which require no further environmental review. However, this initially proceeded before the planning board, and it was requested that an uncoordinated review be used going forward, so what the board can do is you can proceed with an uncoordinated review, and you can type this as an unlisted action. What I did was I provided for you a draft part two, which is based upon the answers that were provided in part one, and if you'd like, I can go over that, or you can go...
Sure, no, you can go.
Okay, so, what I do is usually, since it's only the DEC, that can say no and small in the same sentence, which is a big difference as far as an environmental impact, I like to note where I think it might be a small impact rather than no impact at all, which is noted for the board with a little arrow to the right. And so the first one that came in was that the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or in the bed or banks of any other water body. So right now, the project includes some paving and some other impervious surfaces. Runoff is likely gonna be controlled with a SWIP, a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, it covers part of the parcel, but the parcel does adjoin wetlands, so I think you need a little bit of additional information on that, because I don't know how much disturbance there is, or maybe, of the wetlands, or of the related buffer area around it. So that was noted as a small impact, and I'm going through it so that we can get some additional information, and he can flag that for next time, too.
Kelly, which page do you want?
Page two.
Uh, page two. So, just to jump backwards, page one, I did mark that, yes, there was an impact on land, however, all of the related questions came back no. So the proposed action would involve construction on and physical alteration of the land surface of a proposed site, but based upon the responses in the part one, none of the triggers from the DEC seemed or appeared to have been met, so that was a yes, but was all no's. Then I came to question three on page two, impacts on surface water, which I just reviewed. The next one is impacts on groundwater, so, as you heard from the last application, right now, the village has a moratorium and is dealing with the water issue. So, moderate to large impact was checked, for the proposed action may require new water supply wells, or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells. So pursuant to the engineer's comments that were before the planning board, which I think were also forwarded to this board, the applicant was requested that they confirm the... were also forwarded to this board, the applicant was requested that they confirm the estimated demand of water usage. The proposed project is, proposed, for lack of a better word, sorry, to connect to a public water supply that is near full capacity based upon that. So that should be something that should be addressed by the applicant. That's a, a big issue in the village right now. The next is on page four, which is number seven, impacts on plants and animals. I noted a potential small impact on B, which is the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. And that's because the northern long-eared bat is on the site, so the negative declaration should include, or if there is a negative declaration, or the finding statement, or however this proceeds, should include a tree-cutting limitation for the northern long-eared bat, and subject to any permits that maybe the DEC, I don't know if you've had any conversations with the DEC yet, so.
Yeah, not in particular to bats, I mean, the standard practice now, and has been for the last several years, is to incorporate the tree clearing restrictions, so you don't have to, it, I, I could talk all night, and you, you have other people, but on, on bats, but, you know, the, you don't wanna go through a process to try to prove that you don't have bats on a particular site, because it's almost impossible to prove that bats haven't been there, or may travel through the site. So the alternative is to agree to the tree clearing restrictions, where no trees are cleared during the summer months until October 1st. And that would be the proposal here as well, because it's just.
So what you're saying is, you won't clear them till October, but you'll clear them?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, there's something with the bats as the restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a standard, it's a standard mitigation measure to deal with this particular issue, you know, to avoid clearing trees during summer months when the bats are out of their hibernacula, and could be using the site as foraging, or roosting, or passing through areas.
So the next one is number nine on page six, which is impact on aesthetic resources. This was responded yes, and I suggested four that could be potentially moderate to large impacts, and that is that the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, seasonally, year-round, during routine travel, and recreation and tourism-based travel. Also, that the proposed, a small impact was that the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. Those resources being, this is the Ridge Corridor, and Harriman State Park was noted in the FEAF part one, that people travel to.
Kelly, what do you think of F, where it says there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project? He said no. What about the hotels that are planned?
So you could have that marked as, as small, as a small impact, or as a moderate to large impact, but there's really no way to, for the applicant to study that aspect. They're gonna be looking at it as visibility of their project, and it's, it's less about the community character, which comes in at the other section, the community character. But that certainly is a good point, and should be marked that, that there are similar projects of both retail and commercial in the area. And the next is number 10, for impact on historic and archaeological resources. There is a potentially moderate to large impact, under B, that the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within, or substantially contiguous to, an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory. And that came from the part three, but there wasn't any information provided, so you could get a letter from SHPO saying nothing, but there's no information, we would, the board would need some information on the archaeological resources referenced, in order to determine that it's less than a moderate to large impact. Without knowing what it is and having that information, you can't really make that determination. And... Yeah, page eight? Uh, page eight is impact on transportation. So there are two that I have proposed as moderate to large impacts, which is that the projected traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing road network, and that the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. Based upon the DEC's workbook, and, that's made to assist in filling out the part two EAF, it talks, the closest use that's related to this is shopping center, which, based upon the calculations and the chart, which I won't go into, that the DEC provides, this is considered substantial traffic under that. So the project adds some level of additional traffic to the area, so I think that that would need to be looked at, as far as traffic. Impact on energy was also yes, because the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy, but it did not rise to any of the triggers, so they were all no's. Impact on noise, odor, and light was yes, and there was a potentially moderate to large impact that may occur, for the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations. And that was based on the truck loading dock, just the noise would be generated sporadically, continuously, there just needs to be a little bit more information, which I think the board was asking for this evening, just knowing that there's residences behind there. So when you ask for additional information on the recycling center, and the loading dock back there, if you could provide that to the board. And then I put a small impact next to the proposed action may result in lighting creating skyglow, skyglow brighter than existing area conditions. So the applicant provided a lighting plan, a very detailed lighting plan, showing the level of foot candles at the property line, which I think ended up being zero.
Yes.
So this, just because the foot candles are low, it's still gonna produce some skyglow. So they can do things like tilt things down, make sure there's shields on the lights, things like that, but something to bring to your attention. But if you haven't had a chance, I would say to take a look at that lighting plan, because it was very, very detailed. And page 10, consistency with community plans, was yes, and there's a, an impact for the proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. Simply put, that's why they're here, because they're looking for variances, so that has to be checked. And that was all that I had, so I know that's kind of a lot for everybody to take in, as a draft, which I will provide to you as well, so you can take a look, so you don't have to write down everything that I just said.
Yeah, no, I think that that's fine, and I appreciate you taking the effort to do that. The only thing that I would say is, is that, from, from my perspective, there's no need to act on this tonight. We're not asking you to close the public hearing, and we are going to make an additional submission, so you'll have more information before you, before you would ever have to make further action under SEACER.
Totally understood, just wanted to make sure the board understood this, because usually we get type two actions, so.
Yes.
For the board and the public to hear that the board is taking a, a hard look at this, and.
The difficulty with doing a coordinated action would be if the planning board was lead agency on this project. We would have to go through the full planning board process with perhaps this size building, and wait for them to complete their process before the zoning board could act on the variances. And then if the variances are denied, then we've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort from the planning board, and everyone's involved at that point for a project that doesn't move forward in that configuration.
Do we need to make a motion for the unlisted?
Not right now. You can do that later. I just wanted to go over it so that it can be additional information provided to you from the applicant.
Did you get all that, Jess?
What's that? Oh.
Sorry, Jess.
Well, I've, I've taken down all of your questions and your concerns, and I do promise you that we will be responding, and, and also have a better presentation at, at our next meeting, and so if you don't have any additional questions, I think I would step aside.
Anyone have any further questions?
Not at this time.
At this time? No?
There's one, sorry, there's one I'd like to, for you to add, just in clarification on that proposed freestanding sign?
Yes.
That is a two-sided sign, and if maybe they can give a bit of an elevation on that or something, I don't see it on the other elevation.
It's not on that plan, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
I've added that to the list. Thank you.
That it from the board at this time? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Was there anyone from the public? I'm sorry.
That's what I'm gonna ask.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'll sit down, thank you.
Is there anyone in the first row wishes to speak to this application? Second row? Third row? And I would ask that anyone that speaks to this application speak to either the area, the square footage of the building, or the signage? Okay?
Hi, Norma Fennell, I live at 12 Morgan Court. Concerned with increasing any size of the footprint of the building. It does butt up to a wetland, and I live on the other side of that wetland, and it floods a lot because of run, tremendous runoff, so an area that the dugout has been, where there's gravel that absorbs more, writes more porosity there, where there is the grass in the background. By paving this all over, any increase to size, I think, will definitely impact the surrounding area, and the water that flows down into that one little retention pond that everything comes down to. So that's definitely something that I think needs to be looked into. I also think that, like was previously stated, the property has a specific size allowed on that lot, signage size allowed on that lot, so I don't know why we would need to change that. If you want the property, it is the way it is. We live in a small community, and I just think, anything that we add, the larger signage, the light, the noise, all of that impacts all of those residents there that didn't move here for that. And I'm extremely concerned even with the idea of the traffic pattern, and trying to make it a flagship store. Why not a regular-sized store for a regular-sized community? We live with the Woodbury Commons, and all of the issues that creates for all of us trying to move through that area, live in that area, and as somebody who lives close by, I really don't wanna be dragging that down into the area where I live and reside, because it just increases all sorts of other problems. It sounds like there are a lot of questions still to be answered that they have to provide to the board, but I would just wanted to take a couple of moments to kind of voice those opinions right now, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else in that row?
Hi, my name is Felicida Farrar, I'm a resident and a teacher in the community. So as I was sitting there doing my lesson plans, and I'm thinking of signage, my lesson plan for tomorrow is, how can we read? And kids know how to read through signage first. So McDonald's symbol, all these little symbols, we tell them, oh, you can read. Look at this symbol, what does this mean? I'm concerned as a teacher, I'm concerned as a resident, I'm concerned as a parent to have flashing signs that have beer in our town. This is a small community, a small town, I don't think I need flashing signs, or big sign, or other signage, to return my bottles, or to buy beer. We have a return bottle distributor in this town already, I can find it perfectly fine. We have a liquor store, I can find the liquor store perfectly fine. I don't need big, large signage flashing, or bigger than what needs to be. What our town has already has, are rules in our zone, I feel it's appropriate for this town. I don't think we need to have signage blaring, or bigger, to find the location of Beer World. It's going to be there, I can find it, I'm going to see the building. I don't know why we have to keep giving variances to big companies that are coming into this town. If I wanted to live in the city, I would have stayed in the city, and found all those big flashing signs, and those big buildings. This is not what I moved here for. I could already see, when I have the community walk with our children, and we ask them to make posters, they remember the stores that are around us just fine. They don't need big signage to tell them what's in our community. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone in the fourth row? Back of the room?
Maria Hunter, I'm gonna be bouncing around, because I have numerous documents that I've pulled off the website. Hello, Dominic. I'm gonna start off with the environmental impact. It was page 11 of 13 that was submitted by the applicant. It says the principal aquifer, it was letter H. One was said no, eleven, two said yes, number three said yes. And number four, none of the items were identified on that impact, so I don't know which impacts. I don't know where the principal aquifer is, because it's not noted in that page, page 11 of 13 of the applicant's. So I was just curious. It says principal aquifer, so if there's, if there's a principal aquifer nearby, yes, it's gonna be impacted, but what side of the street? Northwest, east, or south? That was one of my concerns. It was mentioned, I was reviewing the, this has to do with signage, the planning board minutes of April 7th, it mentions, during the redemption center, there will be washing to, and I presume the bottles and, that are gonna be returned there, to reduce the odor. I'm gonna go back to where the village, we're concerned about water usage. If we're gonna be having a building that's 6,000 square feet larger than what is zoned for in there, that's a major concern to me. Don't get me wrong, I'm pro-business. I've been in this town long enough, been on the planning board, I know businesses, we need to survive. So I'm really concerned with enlarging this approval for 6,000 square feet, where are we getting all this extra water to clean the redemption bottles? And I was looking at the, this property has been owned by the Coletti family since 2001, and in the, it's under contract, I, so the people who are selling it don't live in Woodbury. They don't understand us. They live in Chester, they live in Middletown, and they live in the city. So they're, they're not aware of what we have up here, with that particular section. Also, on page, I guess part, the second part of the zoning, of the planning board minutes, it was stated, Engineer Barber said, that said the code allows two signs, but it's intended to have a sign in the north and east, and that should be discussed with the zoning board. It doesn't state in the minutes that she said an additional sign should be there. It just suggests to go the ZBA, so I just want that misconception to be noted. She did not say yes to three signs, it's in the minutes. It's in the minutes, it was said. In regards to the signage, I did note the Smith Street, that was probably from a different application, and they must have put the wrong street.
I'm thinking the same thing.
Because I thought maybe we're having a new road built. With the signs, on the south elevation, you have the redemption and Beer World, and on the backside, the north side, it says Beer World again. And now I just found out tonight, because it's not on the maps, we're having a freestanding sign at the, it's not on the maps. So now, that, basically, you're having four signs, not two, but three, but four. That's a major concern. The business that's next door, we allowed that sign years ago, and it was a nice craft sign, it's set back from the road. We have to be concerned about where we're putting signage, because that is a curve in the road, traffic has to be looked at, which is not your purview, it's the other board. So I'm concerned about the freestanding sign being the fourth sign being requested. Being that we're in the entrance to Woodbury, we have many different groups in Woodbury that we are pushing Central Valley as the entry to Woodbury, and to have all these sinages, it's gonna be detrimental to all of us. And also, the. sinages, it's gonna be detrimental to all of us. And also, the building, the size of the building is way too big. We have a nice, beautiful building on the Cosmos. It looks like a house. It's nice. It's pretty. Looking at this here, it's not your problem, it's the planning board, we have to look at it. You're just putting, you're dropping a rectangular building right in the middle of as you're coming into Woodbury. So, please consider that with your deliberations. As the two ladies mentioned, the impact to adjoining properties to the west and the south, we do have flooding down there. It's not maintained properly. That goes underneath 32 and it does flood. And by putting a larger building and putting a larger sealed parking lot, we're gonna cause trouble. And that, to me, is an issue with environmental review when you look at it. I did mention the water issue, the usage, the impact to water. Just bear with me, I'm sorry. And I know there's, I'm not sure if the New Windsor and the Chester location with the Beer Worlds are any part of this family that being built. I know, I haven't seen the one in Kingston, I haven't been up that far, but I know the one in Chester has been pulled down. I'm not sure if they're rebuilding one in there or, because it looks quite larger than what was there before. I see it every couple of weeks. So, I'm just concerned. If this is gonna be a premier building, do we really need this in Woodbury? And I'm asking the board to really consider that. I have notes all over the place, so bear with me. And being that it's en route 32, I know there's major projects that are gonna be put through there. And with traffic and the concerns, being on a curve in that road, and those who have lived here long enough, we've seen accidents there. We know of accidents that occurred there. So, I've just, the signage and the impact of where that road is going to be with that entrance and exit to accommodate this larger building. And this larger building, you're gonna be accommodating a delivery trucks, trucks to go in because there's gonna be different people who are gonna be serving that area. And on the plans, it was mentioned the redemption center and the beer. There's also a section on the map, cigarettes and cigar humidifiers. I don't know if anyone's picked up on that. So, it's more than just two items being done in there. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that and I think that is it for right now because I don't have my other notes. And also, in 1995, a miniature golf course was approved, but it was never built. In their narratives, if you go through some of them, it says there was a golf, miniature golf course there. It was never there. It was never built. So, that's something also to look at. And I wanna thank the board for looking at who the ownerships are. As I said, the four people that are listed on the application of the ownership of the LLC, they don't live here. And they're selling a property. I get they wanna get out, move on, but think of us, think of us in Woodbury and what the residents have to see every day. And as the residents, the other two ladies mentioned, you do have school, school-age kids that walk through there. You have our pond, or, excuse me, it's not the pond anymore, it's the pool. People can walk through there. And we do have a lot of people that walk around along that side, you know, in front of the building. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? Did you like to respond to any of that, sir?
Not at this time, other than we did make notes of everything. And we would like the opportunity to resubmit. We'll try to make a resubmission for your October meeting, but I'll have to confer with the rest of our consultants to make sure that we would be able to do that. And, but we wanna be responsive to everything that we've heard tonight. So, thank you.
Board, have any other questions they wanna ask?
Just one other thing. In addition to that clarification for the freestanding sign?
Yes.
I noticed the elevation, the south elevation doesn't show dimensions for the redemption portion. So, if they can include those dimensions.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this will not be a flashing sign?
No.
Because they're not allowed?
Yes. I understand. We were not proposing that. And I do wanna defer to Larry Marshall, you know, our engineer on stormwater, you know, and I understand that it's a concern. I just wanna say at the outset, obviously, that we would be designing a stormwater protection plan that would meet the most current stringent requirements. That's not necessarily true of other development that's been done historically in older developments in that area. So, we are required to retain more than the stormwater that's coming off the site currently. So, that will be part of our technical review. And obviously, that's typically, that's done before the planning board to ensure that those requirements are met. But I understand the concern.
Kevin, you have something?
I would like to roughly know roughly how much water they would plan on using per day.
Yeah. I noted it down as water demand as being a question regarding the washing for the, I mean, it's a retail building. So, I mean, apart from having restrooms, you know, there's not, it's not a huge water demand, but the amount of water demand associated with the redemption center is an open question. So, I did put that one down as well.
Anyone else on the board?
Ah.
I'm sorry.
Kevin says no, but you can come up.
Kevin, this will be, Kevin, I'll get you out of here in two minutes. The one other concern I had with the environmental review and looking at the maps with the water collection, the dugout has never, ever had a collection of water pond in the front of the building. If you start putting this collection pond in front of the building, along 32 in the sidewalk, you're gonna open that up to kids playing in it if it's gonna be a retention pond. I know when rains come and if we take away all the impervious area, I don't know why there's a retention pond. Maybe someone can explain that to me later on, not tonight, about with the environmental review. Thank you.
You sure now, Maria?
She wasn't a senior citizen, I would say so.
Okay. Do we wanna continue this, carry this over till next month?
I make a motion that we carry the public hearing over to our next meeting whenever that may be.
Second?
October 13th or if it's canceled or otherwise, you know, our next meeting.
I'll second that. Or did you?
Andrew did.
Okay, sorry, Andrew. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see.
Just as long as I have you, what is the submission deadline for the October meeting?
Try to get it in a couple of weeks before.
Okay.
We would appreciate that.
Yeah. By the end of September, then, certainly.
Yeah, that would be good because it takes time to review.
Of course. Of course, no, I wouldn't. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is building inspector's report, of which we have none. And then we have deliberations on closed public hearings. And our closed public hearing for this evening was the Fisher application.
We have to do the five questions. Correct.
Okay. Do we wanna discuss anything before we start the five questions? Because I know three of us went to the site for a visit and there were some concerns. So, I don't know if you wish to bring them up before the board and discuss them? I think that might be a wise idea so that we're all on the same page when we look at the five questions.
Do we need to, do we type this for secret already or not?
No.
No, I think it's.
So, we should note for the record that this is a type-two, unlisted action?
Type-two action.
No, yeah. It can't be type-two, unlisted.
Sorry, type-two action. Duh.
Type-two. And we got the 239 back on August, it's dated August 8th, which is a local determination. I think the planning board wanted to do this on this.
Yeah, I think it was an unlisted.
Yeah. But we're listing it as type-two. Okay. All right. So, we made this site visit on August 26th and there were three of us there along with the engineer, architect. And I think the biggest concern was the setback from, the masonry building setback of 12.2 feet. So, Evan and Andrew, you wanna reiterate some of your concerns on that?
Yes, some, I think another point of concern was when you visited the site, seeing how the subdivision where the lot line would be drawn in relation to the natural elevations and slopes of the property were much different, much more different than what you see on paper.
Yeah, it definitely was, it was advantageous to see it in person because you don't really get a feel for the property. You're right.
There were two vantage points to that property. You know, one on the top towards the rez and one on the bottom towards the driveway. But you were not really able to see the red barn and that building and the setback and how those lines were affected until we got on and walked the property. And while we understand the logic behind it, when you actually visit the site, the way it's being cut is kind of not, it's counterintuitive to what it looks like when it's on the property, when you're on the property.
So, I'm thinking that you're thinking that, I'm looking for north here. The north line should continue is what you were thinking would be more.
Yeah, especially right next to that red barn. If you continue that line all the way down, I don't know what street that is at the circle by.
It's part of Skunnamunk, I think.
Yeah. It just looked like a more natural and appropriate solution.
Right. I think the problem there was the acreage. They were, the planning board, you know, was looking for the least, the least variance possible. And to give it, you know, whether it's four hun, six hundredths or eight hundredths of an acre would be a lot less. If you drew that line straight, you'd have, you know, you'd have to subtract all the slopes on the one side. And I think that was the issue. I think that was one of the reasons that they drew it that way. I mean, I'm just trying to look at what their minutes say and what they discuss at the meeting. And it looked like this to them, you know, two straight lines at right angles seemed to them to be the best thing. But that's what we have to agree on or disagree on.
Correct.
A question for, you know, based on that. A typical subdivision or property line is not visible unless you stake it and walk it.
Right.
So, I'm curious as to why this would make a difference at all to you guys, to anyone asking the question. Because effectively, it's ephemeral. You can't, if you're looking at the property from Earl Reservoir, you can't see it of the property line. It's just.
Not only that, but if you visit this site and look here, this is all unusable. There's a chasm that goes down.
It doesn't matter though.
No, no, no. I'm just saying.
So, all I'm saying is.
I'm saying, I'm agreeing with Craig in that what difference does it make?
Whether you draw it that way or this way, it.
Yeah.
He could base two one-acre lots.
No, because of the slopes and the easements, you have to subtract all.
As long as it's an acre, then you go from there.
Yeah, but it only has 2.07. So, he's not gonna, not got a lot to play with, especially on lot number two. I mean.
It's still an acre of land.
I think the reality is that when this, and I don't remember the specifics, when this originally was before the planning board, they did get close to an acre each, right? And there were a variety of cuts and angles and various things. The planning board said, you know what? That's a nightmare. We want straight lines.
I agree. I don't see a.
So, I'm just, I'm looking at it from the perspective that Andrew, your question about when you look at it going straight up north-south would make more, what, I don't wanna misinterpret what you said, your specific words. I'm just asking, why does that matter when it's a line?
Well, because you remove the need for the setback on the first property by doing that.
They'd still need.
The setback variance.
Still need an area variance, a variance for this area, the lot size.
If you, if I'm hearing what you're saying, you're saying take this line and take it straight up.
Yes, that's what he's saying.
Correct.
All the way up. Well, now, you're making this probably 1.4 acres and this 0.7 acres. So, the variance.
Would be greater.
Be significant here.
But you don't have to take that specific line that you're looking at. You could adjust that line.
Straight?
You could move it over to the right and adjust that line.
Okay, but again, why? Why would you want to do that? It's largely unusable land and what difference does it make?
Okay.
I just, it's, no, I'm not, that's not stating a fact. I'm asking a question. That's all.
Thing of it is, is that I don't know. I'm just going by what the planning board and the engineer does.
Well, I think the lot line, you know, even though, yes, you never see a lot line unless you look at a survey or you're selling a property, it does matter where you draw it because that obviously dictates in the future if that building is to be demolished and something else is being built. That would dictate what else can be built, where it can be built and things like that. So, I think the lot lines do matter.
Well, if, so, I'll give you an example. We recently had a case where we had granted variance for a shed that was being torn down and rebuilt. And it literally had a 99-point something percent variance because it was essentially sitting on the lot line. So, if they were to demolish this building completely and come back and say, "We wanna build something else," they'd need a new variance. They wouldn't get a building permit before there was a variance granted to do that.
Which property are you talking about?
The existing masonry building.
The house or the accessory structure?
The accessory building.
Right. But what this variance is gonna allow them to take the red barn down, come down 17 feet and turn that into a, what's remaining of that masonry building into a garage?
No, the variance is only going to allow the 12.2 setback. What they do with that garage is.
It's an existing building.
There's nothing to do with us.
Well, no, because Mr. Nimaiko said that it's gonna be within the accessory square footage requirements.
Correct.
Right, but do they have to do.
The existing building at its current size does not fit the accessory building, the accessory use requirement.
Correct.
So, they're removing part of the structure to bring it down to fit that requirement.
Correct.
But the variance is only for the 12.2 setback.
Correct.
To that lot.
So, they may look and say, "Oh, you know, it's gonna be really expensive to make this into a garage. Let's just leave it the way it is."
What they do with it.
And I know we, you know, we discussed concerns about, sorry about that, concerns about people living there. They can't have another dwelling unit there. You can't have two dwelling units on the one property.
So, but I have, I have a problem with that also. So, if now you're telling me that it's not gonna be brought down to the correct size of an accessory use building.
No, it is.
It is.
But what Mr. Brady just told me was, or you just told, I believe it was you that said, "They may not even do that." They might.
No, no, no. What I meant was.